Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Baker. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Conley. Counselor Consalvo. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Ross. Counselor Yancey. Mr. President, we have a...
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I'd ask all counselors and all guests to please rise at this time. As I have the honor to introduce my friend and colleague Counselor Bill Linehan, who will introduce Reverend Burns Stanfield, pastor of the Fourth Presbyterian Church in South Boston, to deliver our invocation for today's meeting. After Pastor Stanfield delivers our invocation, I'd ask all to remain standing as Counselor Linehan will lead us in a salute to the flag. City Counselor Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an honor for me to stand here and introduce the pastor of the Fourth Presbyterian Church, Burns Stanfield. He's a great contributor to our community, not only in a spiritual way, but in an extreme holistic way. He truly lives the Christian doctrine in that he feeds the hungry, he works to house those that are homeless, clothes that need, clothed those that need to be, who need clothing, and he works tirelessly on behalf of our entire community. He's also a very talented individual, and he uses music as a way to outreach and to bring people together. I've been to a number of his services. They're extremely joyful and lightning, and he has a great flock in which he leads. So it's an honor again for me to introduce, for the invocation here today, my friend Reverend Burns Stanfield. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My church is in South Boston, and I've been there a long time, but my parents are actually from Oklahoma. They met in a small town called Shawnee, which was hit by the first tornado earlier this week. So I invite you, and I know you will, join me in praying for the people of Oklahoma. When I hear the interviews, I hear the accents of my grandparents and my aunts and my uncles. And my prayer is that they would know the kind of support that we have experienced the last few weeks, and indeed that they would know the strength of coming together that we have experienced this past month. And indeed, it's that coming together that I most especially want to continue to pray for, for them and for us. In addition to serving a church in South Boston, I serve a group called the Greater Boston Interfaith Organization. And we realize, have realized these last few weeks more than ever before, that we really do need to keep tending to these relationships across all kinds of lines that typically divide people. I'm a big fan of a rabbi named Jonathan Sacks, and he wrote that for our age, the main spiritual challenge is to see the image of God in people who are not the image of me. To see the reflection of the divine in those who don't necessarily think the way I do, or look the way I do, or even vote the way I do. To see that image of God in them. And it is in that spirit that I'd ask you to join me in the spirit of prayer. Good and gracious God, we come to you with hearts that are still healing. And we come to you praying for those hearts recently broken and bodies recently broken in Oklahoma. Indeed, God, we pray for the suffering everywhere. But we do so, God, with a grateful heart, knowing that you are a good God, and a present God, and a healing God. We do so thankful that you have given each and every one of us the capacity to find the holy in each other, even across lines that divide. Gracious God, I thank you for this council, this council which embodies our city's deep desire to come together from all different neighborhoods and work together for the common good, bless their deliberations, anoint their decisions, bless this body. I pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Stanfield for your inspiring message. Please join us as Counselor Linehan leads us in a pledge of allegiance. Counselor Linehan will escort the clergy. We have a couple of presentations before the start of the meeting, but before we go to the presentations, I'd like to recognize Karen Weber and Cuba Gooding Sr. from Boston Green Fest, who are here. They will be leading the effort to green our city over the next weeks and months. Thank you both. Could I ask Mark Cornell and John Alessi from the Common Man's Marathon, the Downtown Rotary Club, to come down to the podium? These gentlemen worked with the Downtown Boston Rotary Club, and I think it was about three years ago that they instituted the Common Man's Marathon, which is a 2.62 mile marathon. Joe and I could do. Don't have to be Bill Linehan to run the 2.62. And they had this marathon through Boston Common. It's the third year, I think, was this year. And it's a success. And we're here to honor them for their contribution to the city in a year where ungodly things happened at the BAA Marathon. So let me introduce Mark and John. Mark, you want to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you. So John and I are here representing Downtown Boston Rotary Club. I think many of you are aware, and I know there's a fellow Rotarian here in the audience. The motto of Rotary is service above self. So what we've done with the Common Man's Marathon is try to combine our, we've got a strong interest in youth, a strong interest in fitness, so we've combined that and worked for, worked to do best of all for both of those. We've got here with us today, we've got beneficiaries of this year's race were the Soul Train Program of Trinity Boston Foundation and the Rookie Runners Group of Hyde Square Task Force. So we've got Jess Leffler and Alex Agronsoni in the audience. And then we've got a number of our sponsors, people who helped us to make the race bigger and better than ever. So we've got Lori Ruggles and Kevin Brown from Earl of Sandwich. We've got Christopher Dunn from Back Bay Realty Group, Hugh Devlin from Cross Insurance, and Newbound Sports Recovery Supplement was another one of our sponsors. So, very good.
If I could ask all my colleagues, come up. We're going to do a group photo. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Good job.
And if I could ask Chief Cooley from Boston EMS to come forward for a second presentation. This is actually a three-in-one presentation. So Chief, you may want to come forward at this. This is National EMS Week, and we are blessed to have the best EMS service in the country. That was affirmed and reaffirmed on April the 15th at the finish line of the Boston Marathon, when we saw the chief and his men and women of EMS go shoulder to shoulder with Boston Fire and Boston Police and run to the danger when bombs were exploding. And several of us, members of the council, Counselor Ross, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Linehan, we were all there within feet of the blasts. And we, you know, we say this every year, but then when you see it, as I did and as my colleagues did, it just reaffirms it. It's real. And this is National EMS Week, and we're here to honor our Boston's finest, EMTs, medical professionals that are on the streets doing the important work of public safety every day in our city. And I want to thank the chief for his efforts and present him on behalf of all of the members of the council with the resolution commemorating EMS Week. Chief? Say something.
Thank you, counsel. Wasn't expecting that. But I do want to just thank you all very much. Thank you very much for this recognition that you're giving to our organization. The men and women of Boston EMS are very proud to serve the city. We have been certainly on that day, but every day and going forward, we do. It's especially nice that you recognize us this week, this being National EMS Week, because when you go to this length to do this for us, it's not just us who work for Boston EMS. It's for everyone who's chosen our profession, the Commonwealth, and across the country. And we're going to make sure that we spread that around to our brothers and sisters around the country. Thank you very much for that.
Resolutions. This is the fifth-year anniversary of the Stephen Lala Medical Intelligence Center. I could ask members of that group to come forward. And also the DeValley Institute for Emergency Preparedness. This is their 10th-year anniversary. And as chair of public safety for years, Counselor Ross now holds that position. I was at some of the DeValley Institute classes. And we were getting federal money to go into training and emergency preparedness. And I saw that work happen over at the finish line of the marathon. And all of that preparedness and all of that training and all of those educational lessons that were provided there over the course of the years paid off when we had a real emergency there. So if anybody from DeValley is here as well, I could have them come up now. If not, the chief will accept for all.
Give two more speeches, Chief.
Sure.
Thank you. One quick one, though. The Counselor Murphy is correct in that the city council has often been present when we have hosted those trainings. DeValley's a training institute that we started back in Boston EMS 10 years ago, and that's why we're commemorating that anniversary of that. But, you know, many of the councils that you see here today, they've come to our drills. We've come, we've done preparations for hospital evacuations to look at the effects of hurricanes. And again, as the council was saying, it's good to see that Boston gets so involved in this. It's not just us. It's the hospitals, it's our elected officials, who all understand that they're all a part of it. And thank you very much for commemorating those anniversaries as well.
Thanks, Chief. If you want to call your folks up for the picture.
Yeah. Want to get a?
The chief is shy. He's got a whole group of... And... Well, there goes our audience for today.
Thank you.
All right. Just have one other announcement. The superintendent of EMS, Tom Majaco, who is a classmate of mine from Boston Latin School, is retiring at the end of the week. And if the members of the council would come up one more time and take a picture with Superintendent Majaco, we'd appreciate it. Thanks. I was encouraged. There are no corrections to be made. The minutes to last week's meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no corrections. The minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications for honor the mayor.
Docket number 0863, message and order authorizing the Boston Center for Youth and Families, BCYF, to reestablish a revolving fund for FY 2014 in the amount of $300,000 to pay salaries and benefits of employees and to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate the Ellen Jackson Children's Day Care Program. Docket number 0864, message and order authorizing the Boston Center for Youth and Families, BCYF, to reestablish a revolving fund for the FY 2014 in the amount of $750,000 to pay salaries and benefits of employees and to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate the City Hall Child Care Program. Docket number 0865, message and order authorizing the Property Management Department and Animal Control Unit to reestablish a revolving fund, 1809 6A, for 2014 in the amount of $200,000 to reimburse for administrative costs to those city agencies which enforce CBC Chapter 16, Section 1.9 and 1.9B, and for the cost associated with licensing and registration.
Docket 863, 864, and 865 will be referred to Committee on Ways and Means, reports of public offices, and others.
Docket number 0866, communication was received from Sally Glora, the city auditor, transmitting a list of FY 13 reallocations made by the mayor prior to April 15, 2013, for the purpose of continuing operations.
Docket 0866 will be placed on file. Reports of committees.
Docket number 0732, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on May 1, 2013, docket number 0732, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated April 10, 2013 for the Boston Arts Academy, 174 Ipswich Street, Boston, Mass., 02215. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Should I just do all four?
You can read all four of the Ways and Means, and then the chair will speak to all four.
Docket number 0733, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on May 1, 2013, docket number 0733, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated April 10, 2013 for the Blackstone Elementary School, 380 Charmett Ave., Boston, Mass., 02118. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0734, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on May 1, 2013, docket number 0734, a message and order authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated April 10, 2013 for the West Roxbury Education Complex, including Urban Science Academy and West Roxbury Academy, 1205 VFW Parkway, West Roxbury, Mass., 02132. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0735, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on May 1, 2013, docket number 0735, a message and order authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statements of interest dated April 10, 2013 for the Mario Humana Academy, 312 Border Street East, Boston, Mass., 02128. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Speaking on docket 0732 through 0735, Chair recognizes Counselor Max Siomo, Chair of Ways and Means.
This hearing on Friday, May 17, we had testimony from Carlton Jones, Joe Shea, and Kadeisha Brown, all from the school department. This is a resubmission for the Boston Arts Academy, which will allow the grant process to go forward. The other three schools, the Blackstone, the Urban Science Academy, and the Humana Academy, would be applying for renovations to extend its useful life, reduce maintenance costs, and promote energy efficiency and upgrade science and technology learning space. I would recommend that we all vote in favor of this to send it on to the Mass School Billing Authority. Thank you.
Chair moves acceptance of the committee reports. Oh, Chair recognizes Counselor Charles Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I too attended the hearing. And while I support each of the statements of interest, Mr. President, I am somewhat regretful that with regards to the Arts Academy, we're not talking about a new high school for those students. The Concord-Kalau Regional High School, funding for a new high school, the Ducksbury High School, East Bridgewater High School, East Hampton High School, Greenfield High School, Hanover High School, Long Meadow, Lindfield, Malden, Mossfield, Maynard High School, Metford High School, Natick High, and of course Newton North, we all know about, $200 million for a new high school from the Massachusetts State Building Authority. Norwood High, Plymouth North High, Plymouth South High, Quincy High School, Somerset Berkeley High, Southbridge, Taunton, I can go on and on, Uxbridge, West Bridgewater, West Springfield, Wilmington High School. Mr. President, the reason I went through that list, and I did so fairly quickly, is because the administration has yet to even request funding for a new high school in the city of Boston. And all those projects I mentioned have completion dates in this century. In fact, within the past three or four years. And I could have tripled that number if I read all those have received funding since the last time Boston built a new high school. We have 5,000 students going to non-high school buildings. And I know that this body and this wisdom tabled the loan that I offered to build a new high school in the city of Boston. a new high school in the City of Boston, not just to deal with overcrowding, but more importantly, to make sure at least some of our high school students can go to a state-of-the-art facility. The Boston Arts Academy building, based on this submission, is obsolete. I wish I could say that's the only obsolete and substandard building that the high school students are going to, but that's not the case. Even our traditional high school facilities are outmoded and outdated. But again, I just rise on this occasion, once again, Mr. President, to urge all of our colleagues to take a serious look at the need for Boston to build at least one, or as recommended by the Tom Menino's Blue Ribbon Commission, two new high schools are more than needed in our school system if we're going to provide our students with the same competitive edge that all the students they're competing with in each of these new schools are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. The question now comes on acceptance of the committee reports and passage of dockets 0732, 733, 734, and 735. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Dockets 0732, 33, 34, and 35 have passed.
Docket number 0530, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on March 27, 2013, docket number 0530, order approving a petition for a special law regarding certain licenses for the sale of alcoholic beverages in the City of Boston, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft.
Chair recognizes the Chair of Government Operations, Counselor Matt O'Malley, on docket 0530.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Wednesday, March 27, Councillors Conley and Presley introduced docket number 0530, a home rule petition for the sale of alcoholic beverages in the City of Boston. I chaired a hearing on Friday, May 10. The two authors, as well as Councillors Baker and Yancey, attended. Licensing Board Chairwoman Nicole Marotti-Ferrer testified, as did members of certain organizations, including the Knights of Columbus, Mam Leo, and Syria Temple. The purpose of this ordinance would allow various organizations that had special licenses for the sale of alcoholic beverages to retain those licenses according to the duration terms as originally issued. It would further grandfather in certain groups that had the special licenses issued by the Licensing Board, authorizing the Board to issue said license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages on a biannual basis every six months upon application. There's a little bit of background. Prior to 2009, the Licensing Board issued certain organizations these licenses under Chapter 138, Section 14 of Mass. General Laws for a duration period of six months. In 2009, the Licensing Board notified these organizations that special licenses could not be issued for more than 30 days because of an Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission's regulation prohibiting the issuance of a special license for more than 30 days except for educational institutions or municipal golf courses. Now, we all know many of these organizations, they host charitable events and fundraises in the community, they support local sports teams, and perhaps most importantly, provide affordable venue for neighborhood and family events. Not having a liquor license for these institutions is an economic burden. Many of them rely on the liquor license for the hall rental as the main revenue. It's also a hindrance to having events because to go through the process to get those temporary licenses can be cumbersome. You have to go before the local police chief, or police captain, and there's a whole long application process. So what Councillors Conley and Counselor Presley and many of us did is work to work with the Licensing Board to come up with a new draft that would address these inequities, help right a wrong that was set, and really provide, I think, what is a very fair and sort of reasonable response to deal with it. So there is a new revised draft in front of you. The language ensures that the appropriate groups are covered and restored to their previous status, what they had prior to 2009, for more than 30 days. It provides additional language to the second whereas clause that provides background information, refers the applicable statute and the regulation regarding the duration of special license, and it specifically refers to the organizations by name. And just so you know, there are nine such organizations throughout the City of Boston. They are outward bound, Commonwealth Lodge, number 19, the Skating Club of Boston, Massachusetts Association of Minority Law Enforcement Officers, or Mam Leo, Mount Pleasant Knights of Columbus, West Roxbury Knights of Columbus, Montserrat Aspires, Inc., Syria Temple, and the Brighton Knights of Columbus. What this redraft does, it would grandfather these organizations that had special license for a six-month period. It would authorize the Board to issue special licenses to certain groups on a biannual or six-month basis, which is under Section 14 of Chapter 138 of Mass. General Laws. It would eliminate the economic burden of not having a liquor license on a regular basis for these groups and by allowing these groups to operate as they were prior to the notification of the regulation, while also reflecting the current law and its application. Bottom line, this order seeks to right a wrong that has caused an undue burden on a very small number of clubs and organizations. It would allow them to thrive and serve as neighborhood and community meeting points. These organizations are all well-known, they're known as great neighbors, there's virtually no adverse incidents going back decades for most of the organizations, and they always give back to the community. So this will affect a small pool of people, but it's a very, very important change that we make. It's a home rule petition, there is support at the state level, should we pass it, should the mayor sign it, and I urge passage today. It will just really help right what I think was an ill-conceived promulgation back in 2009. So I urge passage of this bill and thank Councillors Presley and Conley for their leadership on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Chair recognizes City Councilor John Connolly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the Chair just really summarized everything perfectly and just say that, you know, these groups rely on liquor licenses for revenue to maintain their organizations, and these organizations make a big impact in the community and also provide, you know, a positive social opportunities for people in communities to use these halls for celebrations. And so this is really, I think, correcting an unintended consequence of this regulation that goes back 20 years and was not even brought to the attention of these organizations until 2009. So this will do a good that will help organizations across the city, including Mam Leo, Syria Temple, Knights of Columbus, and will help those organizations, and those organizations help our neighborhoods. So I thank my colleague, Counselor Presley, for joining me on this, and I appreciate the Chair's work in expediting this. And just to note that it is being reported out in a new draft. We had a couple of technical corrections after getting feedback from the Chair of the Licensing Board. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thanks, Counselor Conley. Chair recognizes Counselor Ianna Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to commend the Chair for expediting the scheduling of this hearing and running an efficient hearing, and also an efficient offline working session. I want to thank Counselor Conley for his leadership in inviting me to partner with him on this, knowing of my efforts collectively working with mayors and municipalities throughout the Commonwealth, and Secretary Byleke to reform the antiquated state liquor license laws. My vantage point has really been about restaurants, but the point is, even if I had a perfect scenario where restaurants were more ably to procure liquor licenses, many residents still could not afford to host social and milestone events at restaurants. And so our fraternal and surural organizations play a critical role both in building and fostering community, but also in contributing to community. I consider them to be partners with us in this work. They maximize our impact, and sometimes they stand in the gap and do what government can't and won't do. And so it's important that we remove this impediment, this onerous arbitrary regulation. This amended home rule gives them the ability, instead of scrambling every six months, rather every 30 days, they can apply for six-month licenses. So I encourage you all to support this home rule, and in doing so, to support these commendable community institutions and anchors.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. For the final word, Chair recognizes the lead sponsor, Counselor John Connolly.
Sorry, Mr. President, I'd just be remiss. I want to thank Christine O'Donnell for her awesome work on helping work this through. We had a number of legal issues that we had to figure out along the way, and she was phenomenal. So I just want to make sure I publicly acknowledge her and thank her for her great work on this. Appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Conley. At this time, Counselor O'Malley moves acceptance of the committee report and passage in a new draft of docket 0530. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 0530 has passed in a new draft. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket numbers 0610 through 0630, orders for the FY 14 operating capital and school budgets, including annual appropriations, tax orders, loan orders, and tax-exempt refunding bonds.
Dockets 0610 through 0630 remain in the Committee on Ways and Means. Motions, orders, and resolutions. You read the first four together, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0867, Counselor Arroyo offered the following order for hearing on preparing high school students for viable careers through STEM education. Docket 0868, Counselor Arroyo offered the following order for hearing on developing a mandatory civics class for BPS high school students. Docket number 0869, Counselor Arroyo offered the following order for hearing on increasing opportunities for extended learning time. And docket number 0870, Counselor Arroyo offered the following order for hearing on increasing access to early education programs for families in Boston.
Speaking on dockets 0867 through 0870, Counselor Felix Arroyo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for reading them together. I'll try to stay within a few minutes, but I certainly don't need to speak on all of them individually. I am one of five children, and all five of us attended the Boston Public Schools. I haven't been blessed with children yet, but all of my nieces and nephews who are of school age attend the Boston Public Schools. Many of you know my father as a former colleague of yours, or as the first Latino on the City Council, but before that, he was a public school teacher. My mom is a retired Boston Public School teacher, my wife is a current Boston Public School teacher, and my sister is also a current Boston Public School teacher. We speak an awful lot in our family about public education, because frankly, like for so many families much like mine, public schools isn't an option, it is the option. And we have to ensure that what we're giving our students is first-class education, or else we're telling so many students that they are second-class citizens. So I've come to it thinking, what should a child know or do before they graduate high school? And how do we make it so that the answer to that question is real? But I think there's a few ways, and I think this is a good year to start talking about it, because we know we're going to have new leadership, both in the mayor's office, but also as the leader of the Boston Public Schools and the superintendent's office, because the current superintendent has announced her retirement at the end of the school year. But how do we get there? We get there through early child education. We get there by understanding that from all the way up until third grade, you are learning to read. After third grade, you are reading to learn. And if you haven't figured it out by third grade, it's going to be a lot harder for you. Studies have all shown that. We know that, so we shouldn't be surprised by that, and we should be investing at that early stages in life. We get there by making sure that what our students are learning are relevant today. We have about 100,000 open jobs in the state of Massachusetts. Open jobs. Why are they open? Because the employers don't believe that the workforce is ready for them. Because when they're graduating our high schools, we aren't preparing them correctly. We have to accept that reality. We have to focus on STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and math. We have to understand that that is the industry here in Massachusetts. We have to think about teaching our kids financial literacy, which I filed in the last hearing. We have to be teaching our kids how to be civically active, how to know what we do here every day, and how to have a say in this process, and have a voice in the direction of our school system and our city. I think we have to extend the school day. But I think you extend a school day by having an emphasis on arts, music, theater, phys ed, sports, and making sure that all the children at Boston Public Schools have access to that. Can you imagine if you're at the end of your school day, and you're looking forward at that point to your arts class or your music class? You're more interested in coming to school, and you're more interested in staying. We have to make sure that the curriculum reflects them, which is why I've worked with other colleagues here on bringing Black, Latino, and Asian studies in our schools. We have to understand that we have a population that over 40% of them speak a language that's not English. We have to support our English-language learners, and we also have to support the over 20% who are in special education programs. In the end, these hearing orders is having thinking and having conversation with residents across the city about what should a child know before they graduate high school. I think this helps us get to what we believe they should know and learn and understand. But in the end, I think it helps us get to something that we all aspire to have, which is that every school is a quality school, and that the Boston Public Schools is seen as the best public school system in this country. I think it's very possible. I think going into a year, we're going to a moment where decisions are important in how we move forward, and I'm hoping that this can help lead the discussion. I'm grateful for the time, Mr. President. I look forward to working with all of you on this.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. Docket 0867, 0868, 0869, and 0870 are referred to the Committee on Education. Madam Clerk, docket 0871.
Docket 0871, Counselor Ross offered the following order for hearing to discuss the policies of the Boston Fire Department.
Chair recognizes City Councilor Michael Ross.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to acknowledge the president of Local 718, Richard Paris, who's here today, who is focused on this issue, although this issue was raised by the deputy chiefs of the fire department, part of the same union, but kind of a different section of the union. There's an A and a B, and they actually could, if they wanted to, carve out different unions. So, I mean carve out different contracts. So same union, but somewhat autonomous. In the last few weeks, there's been a letter that all of you have now read by now, from the deputy chiefs to the mayor, talking about the chief of the fire department. We had a hearing of the Ways and Means Committee where the issue kind of peripherally came up, but it was decided that it was best left as a separate policy matter. We, as city councillors, cannot wade in to every single dispute that occurs in city departments, but we can't ignore them either. And so when something of this magnitude comes before us, it's important that we look at it. It's important that we make sure that the public and our first responders are making the right decisions, that are having the best decisions made in their benefit. We have to make sure that in government, one of the very most important things that we can do is keep the public safe, keep our first responders safe. And so the concerns raised in this letter were serious. They rose to a level that require our review, in my opinion. So we'll hold a hearing on this and take serious the concerns that were raised by the deputy chiefs, and give them a forum in which they can express their concerns, and we can make a decision, or we can, you know, see what happens. But I think it's important that we provide that forum. I think the council's always been best, in that it serves as an open forum, where we can discuss issues where we may not completely agree. I think that's where we've always done our best work, and bringing people together to resolve those issues. I will say this, the Boston Fire Department has never looked better, has never performed more heroically, and has never had a reason to be more proud than they do these last few, five weeks. So we should remember that, too, that as these issues come up from time to time, really in comparison to the great heroes these people are, and not just the men and women who are on the front lines, but also the brass, these deputy chiefs, and all the way up to our commissioner. These are people, men and women, who are committed, doing great work for, on behalf of our citizens, and on behalf of all of us. So while this will come up, we also have to acknowledge that in the long run, no one could be luckier, no one could be more fortunate than the men and women of the Boston Fire Department here in this town, serving us. So I look forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Counselor Ross. Docket 0871 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Personnel orders.
Docket number 0872, Counselor Murphy for Counselor Baker offered the following order.
Counselor Baker moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0872. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 0872 has passed.
Docket number 0873, Counselor Murphy for Counselor Baker offered the following order.
Baker moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0873. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 0873 has passed. The clerk informs me there are no late-file matters in her hands. Is there anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets? They may do so at this time. Seeing and hearing, no. Chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley.
I rise and ask for unanimous consent to make a brief statement.
Seeing and hearing, no objection. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this is a little unorthodox, but I want to break a little bit with protocol. One of the names we'll be adjourning in honor today is Father William Dunn, and I wanted to just speak for just a minute or so on him, because we've all met him. He was the last, one of the last members of the clergy that I brought in to open up He was the last, one of the last members of the clergy that I brought in to open up the council meeting last year. He was the pastor of St. John's Christostom in West Roxbury, my parish, our assistant clerk's parish, our mayor's parish, and I know many of you met him here and just sort of out in the community. He was just a terrific, terrific man, someone that, you know, I got to know well. He was named pastor of St. John's virtually the same day that I joined this body, so we were both sort of, would often remark our new roles. And just very, very suddenly passed away. He was actually in Israel with Cardinal O'Malley back in April and got sick over there and was rushed home, and had a massive heart attack and passed away on Sunday. But he was just a terrific, just a terrific person. And St. John's, as many of you know, is, you know, sort of known as the liberal Catholic Church in West Roxbury. It's a great community, very forward-thinking, just a rich history of terrific people. He was originally from the Midwest, from South Dakota, actually, I guess the Great Plains, and had that sort of very dignified, solemn persona, but was also incredibly funny and had a very dry sense of humor. We didn't event, many of you were at a comedy show, the mayor and I did, in support of St. John's last year, and my predecessor, Counselor John Tobin, helped pick the comics, so needless to say, they were more on the blue type of comedy, and Father Dunn loved it. So he will be wake today at St. John's from 4:00 to 8:00. He was just a terrific, terrific person, so I appreciate the opportunity just to speak publicly, a great man, a great priest, and a great friend. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Chair recognizes Counselor Ayanna Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm unanimous consent to make that.
For unanimous consent, make a brief statement. Hearing no objection, please proceed.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder, this afternoon, in the Curly Room, from 3:00 to 4:00, Counselor Consavo and I will be hosting a briefing in conjunction with the Massachusetts League of Community Health Centers. I had proactively reached out to the league in the wake of the closing of Rock's Comp. I am fearful that this is the beginning of the end, that our community health center model is no longer sustainable. In the wake of the sequester, I reached out as the Chair of the Committee on Women and Healthy Communities, recognizing the role that our health centers play in keeping the individual, family, and community healthy. And so I urge all of you to participate or to send an aide. When I called the league, they told me Counselor Consavo had also made a similar call, and they asked if we would host it together. But please do come. I'm worried there's a tsunami and a confluence of things that's going to dramatically alter the face of our community health centers, so I hope you'll participate. That's today from 3:00 to 4:00.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. There are two late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to today's consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Consent agenda is adopted. If I could ask all councillors and all guests to please rise at this time as the council prepares to adjourn. Today, we will be adjourning in memory of the following for Counselor John Connally, Edward C. Gaines, Rodney Hughes, Elizabeth C.C. Thomas, Frances Thomas from the elderly commission's mother, for the Chair, Councillors O'Malley and Connally, Mary Jane Lynch Bowen for Counselor O'Malley, Father William S. Dunn, and for Counselor Siomo, David M. Healy. We could have a moment of silence for the aforementioned. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it will do so to meet again on Wednesday, June 5th, 2013, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. The council stands adjourned.